All right, we are going live in three and two. And one.
All right, like to call the Board of Supervisors meeting to order for Orange County. And at this time, if everyone would join in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. If there's no changes to the agenda, I would entertain a motion to adopt.
Second.
Okay, first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. There are no special presentation or appearances, correct?
Correct.
Okay, consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Second.
Okay, all in favor approval?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. Now for new business, a resolution to ratify declaration of the local state of emergency. Before we actually do that, Mr. Voorhees, welcome. I believe this is your first official time on the the meeting agenda. So glad to have you here. And if you'd like to go ahead with that, please do so.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It is a pleasure to be here, albeit under very unusual circumstances. With that, this item was essentially a carryover item from my predecessor interim county administrator Brenda Garten. She was responsible for declaring the local state of emergency on Monday, March 16th. And under Code of Virginia, the board is required to ratify the declaration. So that's what we're presenting to you here this evening.
All right, very good. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I believe that was unanimous. Were you there, Mr. Frame?
Yes, I was seconding or firsting, whichever.
Okay, okay, just needed to make sure. All right. And then 5B is an adoption of personnel policy 8.4, special provision for local emergency declarations. Mr. Voorhees.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. This also is a holdover item from Brenda Garten. And essentially, COVID-19 presents a number of different challenges from our typical state of emergency. And accordingly, there were a number of adjustments to employee work conditions that require, things that required social distancing by way of remote or telework, also quarantine or self-quarantine. And that type of approach wasn't really anticipated in our existing personnel policies. So working with your staff and consulting with some other jurisdictions, Brenda put together a number of adjustments to our personnel policies, which are outlined in the draft. Policy number 8.4, we've got liberal leave, flexible and staggered work schedules, advancement of sick leave, telework, alternate work locations, by way of example. And there's a number of other things covered in here. And so she went ahead and moved that forward to deal with the emergent conditions. But this is the board's chance to officially adopt it into your personnel policy.
Very good. Thank you. Can I get a motion?
Still moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Voorhees.
You're welcome, sir.
All right, item 5D, nope, I'm sorry, 5C, award of contract for services, Amanda Amos.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board and everyone attending. What I have for you this evening is a memo to execute a contract with CAS7 for Newtonic servers for the IT department through a cooperative contract with Fairfax County, Virginia, which is valid through this December 2020. CAS7 can provide Orange County with fair pricing and great customer service for implementing and managing the server project. Funding is available in the county server replacement CIP line. With that being said, staff would recommend executing a contract with CAS7 as provided in the contract for Fairfax County, contract number 4400006324.
Okay, any questions for Amanda?
Yes, is this replacing existing one or is this additional servers?
Mr. Frame, it is a regularly scheduled replacement that is currently in our CIP project. So it is replacing the core county servers that service most of our network.
Okay, any other questions?
Amanda, did I understand you correctly? The term of this would be just through December 31 of this year, this calendar year?
December 4th, yes, of this year.
Of this year, okay. And is that limited because of the Fairfax County contract term or?
Yes.
We, I assume we didn't choose that date, okay.
No, we're just going to piggyback off of this contract to get the server and the implementation from this vendor.
But then once it's implemented, there's no follow-on service?
No.
Okay.
All right, so no further questions? Entertaining a motion? Okay, second? Due to the video, was that our second?
From who? I will second if you didn't get one. I thought I heard.
Very good, Mr. White. We'll go with your second then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Amanda.
Thank you.
Okay, next is 5D, navigation easement acquisition. Kurt Hildebrand, Assistant County Administrator of Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. You have a memo, the board has a memo in front of you that describes the parcels that we have an agreement with the landowner to purchase navigation easements across. I guess the key point of the memo is that their counteroffer exceeded the amount that you're allowed to offer them without concurrence from the FAA. Also included with the memo, the letter from the FAA that approves the administrative settlement for the purchase amount. And I'd like to also add one bit of good news in these crazy times. At the bottom of the memo, I mentioned that we would seek reimbursement for these acquisitions in a future grant, and it would be eligible for 98% reimbursement. Spoke to FAA today, and because of the CARES Act, the near-future AIP grants will be 100% FAA funded. So there will be no required local match. It will be completely 100% federal money. So if the board is okay with moving forward with this acquisition, we'll include that in a near-future grant that I'll be coming back to the board. Possibly by the next meeting, because there's some other things that will also want to be included in the grant application that I haven't completely brought the board up to speed on yet. But anyway, the good news is if we can, if we can get a grant going here in the next 30 days or so, then we can definitely take advantage of the 100% reimbursement.
Any possibility for grants on the landfill?
I haven't seen anything, but I'll look into that.
Any other questions?
Yes. If you got this man to sign the thing, so moved.
And we had a second?
I'll second it, but I have one more question. Okay. We have three separate easements because they're all different elevations?
We have, we actually have two different approach surfaces that we're acquiring easements for. And actually, on the parcels, well, I will say on the memo in front of you, four of the five parcels, we currently have no easements on. The parcel 30-29, we already, we already own a easement that covers the 20 to 1 approach surface, but not the 30 to 1. So there are two different services that we're trying to cover, and there's five parcels owned by Mr. and Mrs. Blevins in this particular case.
Well, I was just interested that you have five parcels, but you actually have three separate easements. I think I understand that now.
All right, very good. Any further questions for Kurt? I would entertain a motion.
We already had the motion.
Okay, a second?
I seconded it.
We're all for it, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Passes unanimously. Thank you, Kurt.
Thank you.
All right. Number six, old business, 6A, is juvenile and domestic relations court advisory council, next steps. Mrs. Skol.
Good evening, gentlemen. This is a follow-up to the process that we started last fall with Judge Morris. As you recall, in late January, you adopted a resolution which allowed for the creation of the juvenile and domestic relations court advisory council. And in that resolution, the board authorized the judge to appoint five participant organizations. And the board can appoint five participant organizations. I reached back with Judge Morris and was able to have some discussions with him to clarify who we feel would be appropriate to be part of this group. And I've included that in the memorandum as an attachment. Judge Morris also included a draft letter that he was going to send out to the folks that he wanted to reach out to. So this evening, I'm following up to ask permission to reach out to folks who are part of our Orange County network, our family. So folks like the Office on Youth, the Department of Social Services, the schools, the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, and the Sheriff's Office to see if they would have representatives who would be willing to serve on this council.
Very good. Any questions for Stephanie? All right, in that case, just get a consensus to move forward.
Yep. Yes.
Yes, go forth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Stephanie. All right. 6B is ratification of adoption of continuity of operations plan, COO, County Administrator, Mr. Voorhees. Could you unmute yourself, please?
Thanks for the reminder.
Okay, there we go.
Again, this is a carryforward item from the initial days of COVID-19 and drafted by my predecessor Brenda Garten. So what we have, and it's a good practice for all jurisdictions. I think in my quick discussion about this, there had been some early work done some time back. And the drafts were sort of dusted off and updated. And so this includes some clarity around business processes that need to be reconstituted should there be a significant interruption of governmental services. It also designates or sets out a process whereby the county administrator would designate essentially two county personnel to take on specific roles. One, to keep operations going during the interruption created by some sort of disaster. And the other, to reconstitute and kind of put things back in order. So it's got that framework. It's based on FEMA guidance. And then it has specific appendices that outline kind of the contact information for our personnel and the order of succession for our personnel and how that would play out in the event that there were folks that were incapacitated due to the event. So this is all contained in this plan. It is largely being, I guess, withheld from public dissemination as that is sort of the standard approach that FEMA and VDEM take on these documents that we don't want to share the personally identifiable information and contact information all in one place. But I've had some earlier conversations with Supervisor Frame a little bit about that. And I do believe that should the public and the board wish the public to have a little bit more insight as to what we're doing here, we can certainly do that. Would just need to redact the personal contact information and some portions of the succession planning piece. And we can, and those are mostly in the appendices, and we can then release kind of the the basic framework that we're using here. So with that, we recommend adoption of the continuity of operations plan.
Thank you very good. Many questions?
Yeah, I have a concern that I mentioned it to Ted earlier. The fact that we're creating this plan to deal with emergency situations and then keeping the entire plan secret from public just doesn't feel right. So if there is a way of redacting all of the sensitive information, I think that it should be made available to the public once the other information is redacted. But I think just the idea of we having a plan here that deals with emergency operations and we don't tell the public what it is, it's a secret plan, just doesn't feel right.
I have no problem with doing that.
Any other comments? All right, motion to approve then?
I would make a motion to approve with specific redactions for privacy and other sensitive information.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Voorhees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, number 7A is under Department Director, Constitutional Reports, proposed dog park at Booster Park. Mr. Mubry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I come to you today with asking permission to possibly install a dog park in the upper corner of Booster Park. It would like the disc golf course be funded through our foundation. So it would come of no cost to the county other than my hours and time in. I think included is a schematic of roughly where we'd like to put it. And I have talked with land planning, landscape planning and design. And they've given me a proposal through our foundation to pay for a study that would do a site plan and give us a nice storyboard with the rendering and all that kind of good stuff at the end.
Okay, I've had a couple of discussions with you. The area that you're looking to put this at is basically an unusable area for the most part as far as for sports complex and everything. And it's also the landing zone for the fireworks display. Is that correct?
Correct. We call it the bush hog field because when RNG Sports had it, they basically just bush hogged it. That's all they did with it.
Okay, I think it's excellent idea. And we also have a letter from PEC supporting it as well. But based on zero cost as far as the county budget goes, I think it's absolutely a phenomenal idea and a great need for it. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I don't know that we necessarily have an answer tonight, but I think we should seek one. I don't know whether it's through signage or any other type of declaration, but it seems to me that we want to make sure that we're not taking on any liability for the county for this. Dogs occasionally don't get along as well, or maybe I should say any better than people do. And it seems to me that that needs to be, remain the owner's responsibility. I don't know if the county attorney has any concern about this at all, but I would, I'd like to have him be part of the planning such that appropriate signage could be posted, reminding people as to their responsibilities or these kind of things, or anything else that we might have to be concerned about with respect to liabilities.
Yes, I've talked to Tom a little bit about it, and Stephanie May can address it. She's talked with VML, I think it is.
I spoke with VACO, and I actually sent them some schematics. And my contact at VACO offered to come out and help us create signage with verbiage that would deflect liability and make sure that it was clear and concise. They also said that they thought our general liability coverage would handle anything that may happen out there if they approved the signage that we put up.
Okay.
Yeah, Lake of the Woods has a park, and I would offer to, Tim, just contact them and see what some of the the rules they have for actual conduct and use of the park, just as a, as a point of information.
I've already started gathering all the area, different recreation departments, excuse me, that have dog parks. I've already got a whole compilation of rules that we'll sit down with Tom and go over and get a good set.
All right.
Tim, what is the, I don't, I understand this is going to be a place where people can bring their dogs. But beyond that, I don't really understand what the, what the, sort of the idea is behind it. I mean, will this be, it looks like you've got four pins set up or four runs?
Looking at it, there's two larger, the two larger areas are for large dogs, two smaller areas for small dogs. The idea is we can close one at a time. So only one is open where we're resting it. If you look at pictures, and a lot of the dog parks, they've turned into dirt because they're overused. This way, we can have one of the large and one of the small open, and then after two weeks, shut those gates and switch over and let the grass come back some.
Okay.
So are these, are we, are we looking at this being where there's going to be multiple dogs in the, in the run?
Correct.
At one time?
They run around and chase each other.
And are we going to enforce the county's leash law inside the park or is it going to be exempt? Be an exempt area. I don't mean to be nitpicky, but I, I've seen these operate, and they're wonderful ideas until they aren't.
Inside the dog park fences would be an off-leash area.
Make sure that the fences are really close to the ground because my dog can get under them.
Well, I think that that needs to be part of the, either the signage or some brochure that's passed out. I think, I think the owners, there's an education part of this that I think is important that the owners understand what the rules are and what responsibilities that they must assume, whether it's cleaning up or controlling their dog or whatever the list might be. I just, I think a little attention, and it sounds like you're on the right path, Tim. I'm not second guessing you here. But some of these things need to be emphasized because they, I could just see a situation where someone who's aware of the county's leash law and sees someone's dog running loose, all of a sudden, there's an opportunity to have some fun. We'd like, it'd be good to avoid all that.
Yeah, I think Tim's done quite a bit of research on it. Like I said, I've met with him a couple of times. And I think he's, everything, everybody's hit on or things that he's already addressed. And one thing he did want, want to make sure of is that this will be funded without county funds, and he is not starting any fundraising at the current time. He's going to wait until the COVID-19 issues have passed before he starts fundraising for this through the Parks Foundation. So there's no other questions or concerns? I would accept a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Very good. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Tim.
Thank you.
All right, the county attorney's report. Mr. Latchney?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have one quick item by way of an update. I received an email today from Rick Wilkinson. As you know, he's been serving as attorney for the Orange Volunteer Rescue Squad. And as you may recall, we entered a settlement agreement with them where they were going to transfer the remaining cash to the Orange County Education Foundation for a scholarship fund. And Rick emailed me today and told me that on the Orange County Rescue Squad side, everything is done. Articles of dissolution have been filed with the State Corporation Commission. And they're just waiting for the Education Foundation to tell them the fund has been set up so they can transfer the funds. And so I didn't get a chance to check with anybody, the Education Foundation. But my understanding from Orange Volunteer Rescue is they're ready to stroke that check as soon as the Education Foundation tells them they have the fund to make it to.
Very good, sounds good. I believe that they may just need to add it to their wording or whatever, but they already have the, everything set up for that, I believe. But very good. That's good news to hear. All right, thank you.
I will follow up on that.
Okay, very good. All right, with that being done, county administrators report, Mr. Voorhees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would normally use this time to talk about how warmly I've been welcomed by staff. But I'm not sure that's the appropriate description. I will say that people have made great effort to reach out, but from, from a distance. And so I'm learning, learning faces from their homes and through the screens. But I tell you what, you've got a great team here that are continuing to make things happen even under very trying circumstances. It's obvious that the Orange County team is, you know, keeping business going. And so I'm grateful for that. I look forward to learning more about each and every member of the team and also understanding the board's goals and working together. We'll get through this current exigent circumstance. And I appreciate the board certainly reaching out to me and look forward to my tenure here in Orange.
Very good. Thank you very much, sir. All right, with that being said, board comment. Let's start with District 1 and move right on through if anybody has a board comment today. Mr. Johnson?
Can I pass and then come back after, you know, somebody says something I disagree with?
Absolutely. We always reserve that right for you, sir. Mr. White?
No, I want to, I want to welcome Ted to Orange County. And I look forward to working with him in the future to, to make, make Orange County a better place to work and live. I also want to just, you know, thank the staff, the entire staff for, for keeping the lights on during this extremely unusual and scary situation that we're dealing with. And I particularly want to mention those employees that are on the front lines dealing with our fired EMS and our sheriff's department, people who have to, they basically have to keep doing their job the same way. They can't do it at an arm's length or whatever. So I want to particularly thank I want to particularly thank those, those county employees, but thank all county employees for, 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 for keeping the ship afloat and moving forward, and hopefully very soon life can return to normal.
Very good, thank you, Mr. White.
I, I also would like to make the similar comments that, that Mark just made in terms of the staff, the responsiveness using all sorts of means except, I haven't seen any smoke screens used or smoke signals used recently, but about everything else is being tried, and people have been very responsive. They've, you know, done things above and beyond to, to try to maintain some sort of continuity and responsiveness. There's still a lot going on despite the, the fact that we can't be together in a room and work, work through something, so the, the extra efforts are, are being noticed and clearly are appreciated. On, just one, one other comment, in, in addition to welcoming Ted on board this morning, he and a couple of other of you that I see were on a conference call with our financial advisor, Davenport, talking about the, the options for funding the capital projects that we are, we've announced as part of the new budget. And I just want to give you a, a quick update as to what the next step is there, the plan is to release a, an RFP to the banking community to solicit responses, really bids, for our business. Those bids are probably going to be available for all of us to look at sometime in the middle of next month, roughly. You know, we can see if we like any of them, we can reject them all, there might be a room for, in some cases, negotiation. But that is the next step in this process of, given the interest rate environment and the fact that, that banks seem to have plenty of lending authority these days, that is their recommendation as to the first step in the process of trying to identify funds for those projects, and so sometime in the middle of May, it would probably our second meeting, potentially our first meeting, we will have a report from them that indicates what kind of responses and how aggressive the banks decided to be on our behalf. So thank all of those who participated in that conversation today, Tim, I guess that's a good way to start your introduction is to figure out how to go find money, so. It actually was a good conversation, it's a, it's a rather unique environment that we're presented with right now, partly because of the virus, partly because of things the feds are doing, partly because of interest rates and what, with their, the dynamics there, so not sure how all this would play out, but it, it'll be an interesting first step, I think.
Mr. White, we also did investigate using smoke signals, but as you know, we can't use them until after 4:00 PM, so it was ruled out.
Very good.
Touche, I forgot about that. Yeah, another one of those ordinances that we have.
That's right.
We have to be careful.
And on that.
Be sure your dog is on a leash, though, if you have one.
Yes, Mr. Goodwin.
Yes, I'll echo what my, my two cohorts have said so far. The addition I would like to add is, I would like to thank the citizens of the county, because in general, what I've observed in my not really being able to see anybody thing either, is that I notice when I am up around town, people are wearing their face masks, they're staying away from each other, and we're, we're learning how to behave so that we can survive this unusual climate until we can come back to something that resembles more what we are accustomed to.
Very good, all right, Mr. Frame.
Yeah, in addition to the comments about staff and the, the citizens, I'd like to make a special thanks to the citizens who've been helping out Dogwood Village. We've had citizens groups and different organizations and families bringing in donuts, subways, pizzas, little relief packages. There's just been a, a warm and outpouring of support for the staff that's working at Dogwood and trying to keep, keep that place healthy. At this point, there's no, there's no coronavirus in the, in our senior living or, you know, or in our health and rehab center, and, but people have been working very hard to keep it that way, and the county's citizens have been a good, doing a great job trying to support them. I've got another thing on the appeals, we set the deadline for appeals on the, to the 30th of April. And the reason, part of the reason we're concerned is because all the information on the reassessed values was in the commissioner's office. However, they are now on the GIS system, so people can go and take a look and see what, what their assessment is, compare it to anybody else if they're looking for, for any kind of an appeal. So I'd like to extend that to, to May 31st, the end of May, so that people then be, would be, know, know that they can get that information on the web, on the GIS, and if they want to make challenges to their reassessment, that they can do that. And I would like to ask Tom, do we know where we stand on the training for the appeals board?
I haven't heard anything, but they have, they have, usually they send the letter, letting them know that people have taken that statement.
Tom needs to use smoke signal.
Okay.
You're breaking up, Tom.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Frame, why don't we defer?
Yeah, I think.
Call to him later.
Yeah, I would, maybe we can talk separately, there's, there's no, no action required, I just wanted to know what it is, because I've got one appeals board member who doesn't really know what's going on yet, and I need to see whether he was told and missed it or what. I got a couple of other things. We agreed to the idea of putting in the subdivision ordinance easements for fiber optics, is that still on track? Is somebody on the planning commission working on that? I guess not.
What, I was going to say, we'll have to check, check into that, check with planning staff to see with them and the commission.
And we have this program where Orange County is the, the pilot program for healthy watersheds forest retention, and we're supposed to be building a system where we aggregate for purposes of, of getting some reimbursement to our landholders, anything. I, I realize that requires an economic development director, but since we are the pilot program for the state on that, we probably ought to do something to try to move that ahead.
Mr. Frame, I'm, I'm going to be meeting with our new county administrator on Thursday morning, I think it is, and one of the things on my list is that topic.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
I will say that I have had some preliminary conversations with, with Stephanie and others about pulling that together and finding all the pieces, I think Stephanie actually owns the file at this moment.
I have all the files.
Okay, that's all, let's just make sure that we hadn't dropped.
Well, you, you're right, you're correct to point that out, we, we are, we are behind on some of our, some things that have, should have been accomplished on that project, and we need to discuss a way to, to get caught up and, and move that forward. As I say, that'll be, that'll be one of the things I want to talk about with Ted on, on Thursday.
Before we leave, can we get us, we can get a concurrence on, on delaying the submission dates for reassessment appeals to the end of May?
The only question I have, Lee, is, since the judge appoints the, the Board of Equalization, I don't know what term he gave them. As long as we're not exceeding any term that the, the judge gave, I think we're fine, but I don't, I don't know if there was a term or, or what it is, subject to that.
I think the resolution that was set by the board gave them a term through December 31st of 2020, with the idea that their work would be completed by the end of June.
Okay, I don't, I don't think you're going to make it by the end of June, but we did discuss the, the ability if, if there was a reassessment, and after they paid their taxes, they could get, they could get reimbursed if their assessment was dropped, was reduced.
Right.
We, we, we may, well, I guess, could, could you amend that to, provided we meet all deadlines that have been imposed, extending that to May 15th?
I just, okay, I, I mean, I'm not sure how many of the citizens know that that's available on, on the GIS, and if they want to make an appeal, they've got a basis to do that.
I would say our, our receipt of appeals has slowed to almost a trickle, even with it being extended to April 30th. So. I'll, I'll, to the board, I know that the resolution was set, giving them a term through December 31st of this year.
Yeah, so we don't have a conflict there, the question is to, how late do we want to let them, and since they, at least one member hasn't been trained yet. I, I don't know, I can, I can go with May 15th, because I will, I will let my, my constituents know that, that the, the thing has been delayed, and that they can get the information they need off the GIS.
Okay, so are you motioning that we delay it until May 15th?
Let's, let's do that, that's, that'll make the, I don't know if we need a motion for that, but if, if that's so.
We definitely need a concurrence by a majority of the board.
I'm, I'm fine with May 15th.
That's fine.
No, works.
Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Okay, all right, yep, we're good to go till May 15th then.
All right.
Anything else, Mr. Frame?
No, I thought that's enough.
Okay, I have a couple of things, one, I want to, once again, welcome the new county administrator. I think we're in a good place now, moving forward. I believe that our citizens and our businesses and our employees have all done a phenomenal job, when you look at the number of cases that we have in Orange County versus other areas, it's obvious that social distancing and the right procedures have been taken. I want to say thank you to all the restaurants that are still making and serving food and providing it to the citizens, and I want to thank the citizens for taking advantage of that. Also, something else that seems to drop by the wayside right now is broadband. And broadband's not dropped by the wayside, it's just the discussion of it. The broadband has been moving forward, the fiber's been, being put into the laterals and everything, and I want to thank the Chair and Vice Chair of the Broadband Authority for all the work that's being done there, along with Louis Foster and everybody else, but I've received numerous phone calls constantly about the broadband, and people are really excited to see that things are moving forward. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Since we've, since we've lapped around, it's back around to me, I, one other thing I wanted to say. I, I do want to thank Brenda Garten for, for serving as the interim county administrator. You know, she's a native of Orange County and, and was, was an administrator back in the 90s and early aughts, and we were very fortunate that she was here as the, as the interim. You know, it was a completely bizarre situation that she walked into, and we were fortunate to have her here, and so I just want to thank her for being here and for, for getting us through that very, that very strange period from, from mid, mid-January on to early, early April.
Very good, thank you, sir. All right, if there's no other board comment, appointments to boards, commissions, or I'm sorry, any questions on the informational items? If not, any appointments to boards, commissions or committees?
Yeah, would somebody like to appoint me to RSA again?
Go for it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I. All right, you, you are so reappointed, sir. All right, calendar, we have anything, well, I know we have to, do we have to do anything there, Allison, as far as adding any of the public hearing stuff to it?
No, sir, we don't have any additional public hearings to schedule at this point, you all have already taken action on the VDOT six-year plan, public hearing.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, actually, can, can I go back and, and make a couple of appointments where this format is a little bit confusing, but there are two appointments I, I would like to make.
Absolutely, sir.
The first one is the Library Board of Trustees, Christine Caston, I want to, would like to reappoint her. And also for the Youth Commission, Shirley Irving's term has expired, and we'd like to reappoint her.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 So done, sir. Very good, all right, we need to recess for closed, Mr. Latsney, are you still there? Allison, could you possibly read us into closed?
I don't have a closed meeting motion, but I don't think we were prepared to enter closed meeting this evening.
Okay, in that case.
Think the plan is to recess until you come back to your seven o'clock public hearing.
Okay, in that case, we are now in recess until 7:00 PM.
Perfect.